At 7:30 PM this evening, the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the public hearing and the mayor and council meeting of March 4th, 2019.
I approve the minutes of the public hearing, which was on the repeal of Article 8, critical areas ordinance, and replacing it with a new version of that Article 8. And the court approved the mayor and council meeting that submitted March 4th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor? We unanimously approved the minutes. Total operating funds on hand, total operating cash on hand for unrestricted use from Chester Town this evening is $1,229,364.16. We do have in our restricted use funds for the Marina, $1,802.10. The next item on our agenda, payment of the bills.
Move the bills to pay as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show we unanimously agreed to pay our bills. Brings us to Chief Adrian Baker.
Yay!
The much anticipated monthly police report.
About me to present the February 2019, or for the month's schedule of 2019. Our mystery about... We had 10 hours of accident investigation, that was 1 percent. Control 727 hours, at 51 percent overtime. 164 hours of control at 11 percent. Training was 54 hours before. Court of eight hours at 1 percent, and overtime was 166, 11 percent. And breakdown, as requested, the overtime, majority of shift coverage, remind you, we were two officers down in that month, we had three department officers on security. Our daughter rests were 11, and that resulted in 19 separate charges broken down, four each for assault and traffic, three each for CDS and exporte violation, two for FTA, and one each for disorderly FOA harassment. We did not have any juvenile arrests. Our Part 1 offenses, we only had one, that's a good thing. Zero cleared. Part 2 offenses, we had 11, we cleared nine by arrest, and one by acceptance. So for both cases, that was a quiet month, and we'll take that any time. Vehicle citations were 12, our warnings were 176, our red speed was 113, which also was low.
Was it broken, or?
No, sir, it was not.
That's the least, that's the absolute least I've ever seen.
So maybe we'll think that people are getting the message, but I would hesitate to say that it was still. And I suppose in the month of February, it's short, and maybe traffic isn't as much as it might be. You had five civil citations, three for over container, and two for CDS. In our call for service breakdown, we had almost 3 percent for Ward 1, Ward 2 had 30 percent, Ward 3 had 27 percent, Ward 4 had 23 percent. And our busiest day of the week was Saturday, and our busiest time was tonight. And that's it?
So basically, it was a pretty quiet month?
It was.
It was an unusually quiet month.
Perfectly fine with me.
I'm happy to say that you made my threshold of over 10 percent on foot patrol.
One, the term here, check welfare, what does that mean?
So we all get a call like from, maybe somebody lives in Virginia, says, hey, I haven't heard from my dad. Is he home? Could you be nearby?
Yeah, Chief, I'm just curious, not that I've heard anything, but I'm just wondering, do we ever get any reports or incidents or reports about human trafficking or any type of activity like that that might occur in our area that you all are aware of?
Yeah, I'm not aware of this problem, but if I had that, I'd be able to do a little bit of research.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. I think it probably happens, you're all in place to it, you're expected.
Well, this is one of those kind of, I mean, we're a nice, pretty, beautiful little town, it's real quiet, and it could be happening right up under our nose, and we wouldn't even know.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our featured speaker of the evening, Wanda Gorman, from the Artisan Market. Artisans Market.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On March 16th, we had a meeting where all vendors and new vendors came. We had 27, and that included their spouses and children. Right now, we have 24 vendors. We lost four, we gained four new ones.
And were they all there? Like, what was the attendance like at the meeting on the 16th?
We had roughly about 18 vendors.
That's good, that's great.
18 vendors. We had a breakfast meeting, so that really attracts a lot.
Recruitment tool.
Yes, it does. It does. The other thing I'd like to ask permission for is, the first two spaces on High Street have them coned off to be load and unload only. You guys did a wonderful job in putting those bags on, it says that no parking from 8:00 to 12:00, but nobody pays attention to that on High Street. And customers that come into town, either shopping at the shops or at the market, they park there and they don't move. And it's really hard for us, because the farmers are on Park Row, to find a spot to park. I don't know what you guys feeling is on that.
So it would be...
It would be just the first two on High Street.
Going from Cross North?
Yes.
So it would be for people pulling in, unloading, and then moving out?
Parking, yes.
And then someone else comes?
At 12 o'clock, they do the same thing.
Yeah.
It would only take a couple of tickets, Chief, and we wouldn't see them anymore.
We could, in addition to the bags, we have orange signs, which are much more physical. We can do that this week, see if that opportunity.
Well, we're starting on March 30th, Artisan Market, and we're doing about 73 projects. And also, I know a few of you know, I moved to Florida in the fall, and my daughter Sarah is with me, has, is for the co-chair of the market, so next year and in the fall, I'll be back and forth, but she's gonna run the Artisan Market. She's helping me out on days that I couldn't go, or things like that, and she's aware of the things. And whatever, very well, our meeting, all the vendors were very receptive for this, and I think she'll do a great job.
Great. She's like your apprentice, kind of?
She is my apprentice.
Her salary comes out of your salary.
Yes, it does. Oh, yes, it does. And plus two, she handles paperwork in Vanpassa.
Oh, wow.
Vanpassa. Other than that, if you guys have any questions?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Are we putting out cones, or are we putting orange signs up, Chief? What are we doing?
Well, I thought you were asking something in addition to the bag, is that what?
Yes, and I think the orange signs would work great.
I'd like to try that, because it's easy to remember one week for our three crew to put out the cones, but then they don't get taken back off, and then all the way till Monday, there's no parking there, so we get feedback from...
See how it works. I'm sorry, are we saying no parking, or are we saying no parking except for vendors?
Making a loading zone of two spaces, and the rest are...
Right.
Just trying to get that so people can get their stuff out. And when is all their stuff out? So when can it become?
Usually, everything's out by 12:30, 12:45.
Okay, so it stays? What stays there? If that's a loading and unloading zone, what stays there? I mean, you're using it so different vendors can come in?
Come in and out.
Okay, so then they're all unloaded, and it's 9:00?
And nothing's there, nobody can park there.
Because?
Because they won't move their vehicle.
Okay, but people coming to the... I mean, your vendors are done, and where do they park?
They usually park at Memorial Park, or on the courthouse parking lot.
Now, I see the loading and unloading, but after everybody's in and ready to go, I didn't understand what happens to those two spaces for the three hours at the market zone.
Right, and sometimes shoppers come, and they pull in, and they don't move.
So I think the problem is...
Those darn shoppers.
We want them to park, we want them to shop.
Yeah, okay, I know.
It's just that, it just, Cross Street can get very, the further up you go, it gets very dangerous.
I think what I was getting at was after, if these are signs that can be removed after everybody's in...
1:00. Then somebody's gonna come there, and they're gonna park, and they're gonna stop.
Okay, well, what happens to the next eight spaces after the two orange ones?
Nothing. I mean, they can park there.
Okay.
And actually, to bring things up to date, we can take the no parking signs off of Park Row on this side of Park Row. The bags don't need to be on the meters on this side of Park Row.
Wow.
Nobody, the vendors don't use this side of, this side of Park Row.
Okay.
In front of the building under construction.
Okay. This almost done? Thank you very much. Answer my question.
Can you just tell me your daughter's name?
Sarah Sezwick.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you when you go. Tell you, I know you're gonna be back and forth.
I will be back and forth.
Wanda does a great job.
Yes, she does. All right. He often imitated, but never duplicated.
That's really nice to say, thank you. I'm gonna add something to my agenda today. John Slocum wants to go over Cars on High, they were a little late last week to get it in the agenda, but he has a unique idea that he wants to explain before he's saying no, isn't that right, John?
Yes, I do. I brought slides in case I need more ammo.
Yeah, I saw your slides, and I think everyone ought to see them before they decide, because it's pretty cool.
Sure. So Cars on High needs a new permit for 2019, this will be our third year. First year, 20 to 25 cars, second year, 30 to 40 cars. It's been growing each Thursday once a month. I'm sure most of you have been out to take a walk around. We get a good showing, the chief people do a good job of getting the street shut off. I guess the only thing we have to work on is the garbage truck that has to come through at 5:00 PM. Maybe they can come through, I'll get ahold of them and see if we can get them to come through a little earlier, so we don't let them right through the street as it's closed off.
So you've been asking for a classic garbage truck to come?
Yeah, we can make a spot for them, to show, but...
That's what they'll...
It'd be great if we didn't have to have them go through.
I hope we can get that done, really.
You never know. We live on High Street, and they've been coming much earlier than they used to, so it's maybe 3, 4:00 now that they go through. So it'd be good if they do that on full time as well. So we wish you folks to give us our permit for this year. The second thing on my agenda is a car show. Cars on High's grown out, I'd love to bring more people downtown for a car show. Because we're getting the amount of cars that we are, and we're only seeing about 50 percent repeat cars each month, we're getting 50 percent new each time.
That was a question I was gonna ask.
So there's a lot of new interest, a lot of cars come out, a lot of people on a Thursday night, they don't make it, they make it, but we're constantly seeing new cars. We want to, we're planning or thinking getting a car show together in September. We have September 14th with Kay picked out as a tentative date, there doesn't seem to be anything else on the calendar. That's a Saturday after the farmer's market. Show would start around 2:00, and go through maybe 6:00 or 7:00. Five to eight judged categories. We'd like to get some folks from the council out to judge cars. If you're around on that date, it'd be great to have some of the other folks involved, maybe some of the folks' businesses on High Street as well, to lend their hand for some of the judging. We want to put five, six cars on Fountain Park. Invited cars, not just any car that shows up. There are some spectacular cars here in town and in the surrounding area, which we've all been shocked at Cars on High when they show up. Because where are they the rest of the time? We don't know. So we would think about five to six cars on the park, and then High Street blocked off like we do on Thursday nights, the 300 block, and depending on registrations, likely the 200 block. But can you all, continue it all the way down? Maybe a little bit of fork? No, you need to have them turn onto Cross to go around, so that would be the two blocks that we'd be looking at for blocking the roadway up.
Well, what time do you want to start?
Maybe 2:00 PM on Saturday? Get the afternoon, you know, everybody gets their sports done in the morning and everything else, all their chores, shopping at the farmer's market, and the arts thing, and then...
Well, if you get them downtown on Saturday afternoon, there's probably more on Thursdays than Saturdays, if you've ever been here on a Saturday afternoon.
I'm here every Saturday afternoon. So that's what we're thinking about doing. I think that it would be good for High Street, good for the businesses that are there, and again, more people that we can introduce down to the downtown area is really what our whole, the whole intent of Cars on High was as well.
Do you have a sense of where most of these people come from?
We keep the email addresses of everybody, but they come from as far as Washington DC, and the furthest that I've talked to, and I try to talk to everybody, DC to Wilmington. You know, we've had some pretty special cars come all the way from DC. Easton, we get people all the time, Dover, you know, the whole group. And the car people were, they let each other know what's going on, and we put the signs out as often as we can to get people that drive up and down High Street aware of what's going on, so it's been good to see the growth each year.
When you say you want some cars on Fountain Park, on the grass at Fountain Park?
Well, whether there is grass or isn't grass on Fountain Park?
Not.
But I've got pictures, but yes, yes, on the grass. Again, six cars, let's say six cars strategically placed around on the lawn-ish, right? And they would be there. I don't, I mean, the most famous car shows have them on golf courses. The cars don't damage the lawn. I don't think that there's much we can do to what Fountain Park looks like today, to be honest with you.
What are you trying to say?
Well, I'd volunteer to put grass, you know, you know, needs to be moved, have to stake it out so that people wouldn't walk on it, but the tables and the chairs and the people on the weekends are...
John, I think if they give it a chance and look at what the links that you sent me, and saw the different applications of it, tomorrow, you have until September 14th. I think it's a great idea, and I think if done properly, with everybody knowing where the irrigation things are, that it will be fine.
Yeah.
These are really classic, I guess you're talking about really hard-to-find cars.
Well, there are some special cars right here in town. There's a fellow named John, I can never remember his last name or anything, but he has 25 Ferraris, he brings two of them out every week. Every month, the Cars on High, you probably...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, he's got $3 million cars, two of them, that is two. So yes, we could find a way to, you know, place, you know, real good cars on Fountain Park. And I really wish it would become like St. Michael's, concours, you know, that we could really get some special cars.
Yeah, and I was asking your wife if you could just take a Google Earth of the park and show me the...
Would you like to see it now?
Yeah, if you have it.
Of course. Man doesn't come prepared. I guess this is...
She got a knife out, Chief, I can't...
It will, but it's not on my camp.
In the right hands, it would be very nice. Do I have to put the password in on this soon?
I could say that's a prepared man. He brings it in his pocket.
I've heard all about, can't park on the grass! I've been shouted at many times over, so figured I would come with...
Guns blazing.
As much info as I could give you.
I think it's neat, the idea of closing two blocks, and maybe even the Memorial Plaza...
Yeah. Again, it would all depend on how much...
If you have that many cars, it's still gonna be intimate with that. Cars or not.
It's a PowerPoint.
We could put it on our webpage beforehand.
Okay, you need to put it in. Left side, right side. There we go.
Probably not come up up on the TV screen.
Yep. We found somebody tall for that job. That TV set.
Well, there's a chair there. So yeah, we would charge an entrance fee, all that money, less the trophy cost, really, we'd go back to Kay's group, Main Street, to fund that, or the garden clubs, so they could put in better grass. Or I'll put in better...
Or put grass in again.
Yeah.
How about that? And again, and again.
How long has it been since it's been?
Well, the problem is, it runs all year round. We don't have a time, we don't get a window anymore. The farmer's market used to be open till October 31st.
Right.
Then we'd reseed and fertilize, they're never off it.
Right.
So it's gonna look like a playground.
Yeah, you know, the only thing you can do is put some, like, little pipes in the ground where you can put up some stakes and roll off certain parts of the, the most beaten-down parts are right, the triangle, right, where it meets the circle around the park, maybe that could be bricked up, you know, because that's where people cut the corners. If you just look at where really all the wear is, it's where the trees kill the lawn with the shade.
You're gonna end up in charge if you keep talking.
I've got lots of ideas.
No, yeah.
Can you get, is it, did you click on to it? It's just spinning?
Yeah, it might not work. Might not work.
Well, I think everything about what you're saying is a good idea, and I think for them to see the links...
I can email you the slide, I can email you the presentation.
I have what you sent, and I think that's just the last little piece of it.
Windows needs to be updated.
When do you want to start?
September 14th.
We're thinking September 14th, that way the kids will be back to school, because there's lots of cool cars that the kids have. Get those people downtown as well. They have a car club that's been started up by a few fellows I know that are in school, so they're also having their own car club that they'd like to participate in.
And when were you guys gonna start back up with Cars on High?
April 18th. Yeah, it goes through October 3rd.
Can we get a motion to approve the permit for Cars on High?
I'm making a motion that we approve the permit for the Cars on High from April 18th to, you said October 3rd?
No, the 3rd Thursday, so whatever.
October 17th.
October 17th.
17, maybe.
I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Already signed, you don't have to sign it.
Do we have to sign?
Nope, you don't sign it.
Thank you.
All right, let the record show we unanimously approved the permit for Cars on High to resume. It's a monthly display. How about for the...
I'd say everybody...
Are we still early on the permit?
I'd say we, for the other, I would say you approve everything until you look at the slide thing, and I think you'll be impressed and say, this can be done, and we'll just add that in. Meanwhile, if you approve the whole thing in spirit, you know, then you can start organizing.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
So Mayor, I have one other thing. I got, I had someone named Elaine Grant contact me from the college, she has a group that wants to clean up the trail behind Royal Farms and Joey's, et cetera. On Sunday, April 7th, from noon to 3:00 PM, the bike trail, the walking trail, rail trail. And we always provide gloves and bags, and they put the bags in strategic locations for us to pick up on Monday, and I always think that's great.
And that's a good stretch to clean.
Yes. What's the time of that?
Excuse me?
What was the time of that?
It's April 7th, from noon to 3:00.
All right.
And I don't know if it's the same as the fall program, but they always turn out, they always turn out a lot of kids.
The first couple of years, it took all day.
Yeah.
I'm serious, I mean, we had old National Bow cans from God knows how long.
I don't really have anything else.
All right. Mayor's report, I only have one item, and that is that we, the town of Chester Town has been formally invited to come talk to the county commissioners about the tax rebate and/or tax differential proposal that I submitted on behalf of all of us about a month, yeah, a couple weeks ago. So they've invited us to their budgeting session on April 23rd, which is a Tuesday, and it starts at 4:00.
4:00?
So Tuesday, April 23rd at 4:00. One of the things it says, Bill, is please be prepared to discuss services or programs provided by your town, as well as how much those efforts cost, so if we could have maybe copies of our audit, is that possible?
Uh, yep.
Or like pie charts or something?
I had it ready for the letter, and we truncated that, so I have it fingertips.
Okay. So just so everyone knows, I formally submitted a letter in writing this year. I've pleaded the case on this every year that I've been elected. And we haven't made any headway, but supposedly, we were very close to having a tax differential last year, and then it kind of got swallowed up in on the school funding debate, and it didn't happen. But there, you know, they said it'd be good if you formally requested this on paper, so we did. I requested a tax rebate of $250,000, or a tax differential in an equivalent amount. With our tax rate, that's usually about five cents. And what that means is the county would agree to lower the county tax rate for residents of Chester Town, because we basically are paying them for services, like road maintenance and snowplows, that they don't give us. So we're essentially paying to underwrite services for everybody else, which we don't see as fair, and this is standard practice in the entire state. We're one of only three counties not doing this. So I will be there making the case again, and if people could help me make the case, that would be really great. And that's all I have this evening. Why don't we go ahead and start our board reports on this end of the table?
Okay, thank you very much. I got a nice letter from the controller thanking me for representing the town when he was in here making his presentation. I mention that because the controller's always very nice to acknowledge the local politicians when they show up, and we may need his help. March 14th was kind of a busy day, it started out at 7:30, the mayor didn't say anything, but he gave a presentation before the community breakfast group. Did a great job, standing room only. It was probably as crowded as I've ever seen that meeting, so people really are interested.
I think it's more the star power.
I thought you were gonna do an Elvis presentation, but you didn't get to it. I was kind of amazed myself, because we are here every week, and we just wonder just what we do, but when you see it presented as he presented it, what we did last year, there was an awful lot done in this town, and we all should, not just the council, but everybody in town should be proud of what has taken place in the last year, and especially during the downtown area. And 7:30 that evening, by the way, Councilman Foster was there with me, and he was also with me in the evening when we went up to save the hospital meeting, which had a nice turnout. The mayor was there too, in front, and made some poignant remarks. There probably was at least 50, maybe better amount of people there. Our Kay McIntosh has arranged a bus to go over tomorrow, and I'm going over tomorrow, and they're going again on Wednesday, but I have another meeting on Wednesday, but we're going over to support a couple of bills that have been submitted by Senator Hershey that will help and maybe actually ensure the fact that our hospital will be maintained as a real hospital. When I say real hospital, not just an emergency room, but they will have full care and beds and so forth. And that's very, very important to this community in so many ways, not just, not just because of the economics, but we have an older population, and it's very hard for them to go that hour and hour and a half to get to a hospital. They were talking about in five years down the road, we have to select some kind of a specialty. I think this county would be great if we studied old people, because by gosh, we got more old people than we got anything else, so probably starved to death with pediatrics, but, so at any rate, it was well-attended, and I understand the buses, if not full, it's very close to being full, and that is important. I've been going over that legislature now for 30 years, for one reason or another, and it does make a difference if they look out there and see a lot of people supporting a bill. Whether they want to acknowledge that or not, it does happen, so I'm glad to hear that our bus is doing well. As far as Ward 4 goes, if we're having problems, they haven't contacted me, maybe they've cracked the bill, so everything seemed to be doing fine.
How about Ward 3?
Ward 3, it's always is a hotbed of activity.
Ward 3, it's always is a hotbed of activity. I have to get that in, just for my good friend.
Even if it isn't, you're saying...
Even if it is, but it is pretty quiet in the third ward, just as usual spring things, there's a couple of road maintenance issues at Hilltop neighborhood, and the interest where needs to be looked at. And I, I know this has been something that's been on the plate forever, but is there ever, will we ever be able to solve that problem 20 and 4, 514, and how rough that, that little turn is as you come? I mean, I know that they dug it up one time and put in some new...
Well, I've got a solution for it.
Yes, sir.
State highway.
Oh.
Yeah, those are state roads.
Really?
It's a state road?
Both of them.
Yeah.
And I, maybe, I didn't have a lot of success with the last district engineer. We, I mean, we put in the park across the street, new sidewalks, and suddenly they say, well, you got to fix the road there. Well, we didn't touch the road, so.
All right.
To me, it looks like when they overlay, they can correct it, and so I didn't do anything because we didn't have the money to do anything, and I didn't feel like we had caused it either, but...
Right.
I also don't think it's a very big problem, to be honest with you. It's been brought up by a couple of people in your ward maybe a year ago, and I've looked at it, and water does stand there, but not for very long. There is positive flow, but slow.
Well, it's gotten better. I remember there was a time when it was really, really rough.
When either one of those roads gets overlaid, that could be fixed pretty easily, but, but anyway, that's the history of it. It's just like such a little thing. I'm glad to see you made progress, or the progress was made on, I don't want to steal your report, so I won't...
But otherwise, all is well. All the, all the neighbors are looking good, getting ready for, for, for spring to really come in. I want to commend Greenscapes for the work that they've done to keep that circle looking good. They've really got that thing looking sharp right now and clean, so I appreciate it.
All right, how about Ward 2?
Okay, I'm talking about the speed. The State Highway Administration is going to reduce the speed on, I don't, I don't know the root number.
289?
289, Quakerneck Road, 225 miles an hour, and they will move the, what is it, the sign that says speed's going to be reduced closer to the, the town-county line, and that goes to the work and persistence of Washington College and the residents at Chester River Landing. So that's wonderful, and that's rec, that's a record breaker.
Yes.
As far as time, that that was taken care of.
Do you know what finally persuaded them? Was it just wearing them down?
Safety, and they weren't, you know, the email didn't go into a whole lot of detail, but I think it was more pedestrian safety, because if we have more pedestrians out there, they wouldn't reduce the speed on the, the bridge, the little bridge out there, but, you know, coming over, it's going to be 25 miles an hour. They thought that the bridge was going to produce a calming effect coming into town, so we'll see. Let's see. Sabine Harvey, the new farmer's market manager, mentioned this when she came and introduced herself, and this is a memo of under, a memorandum of understanding between the Maryland Farmers Market Association and the Chestertown Farmers Market. What basically has to do with, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail on this, but if you've ever heard of SNAP programs, which are the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and WIC, which is Women, Infants, and Children, and now there are Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Programs. So it's actually dollars that can be spent for nutritious food that you can find at farmer's market, and this would be for, we have enough vendors, but then the vendors themselves will have to sign up for this, and then, you know, there'll be a grant and not, there, there's some, this is state money and federal money. I don't know whether it comes under the food stamps program or not, because that's federal, and I don't want to mess all this up, but there is a lot of tracking here, but Sabine is very ambitious and wants to get this started, because this will help to increase food and secure households' abilities to afford quality nutritious foods, to generate additional revenue for local agriculture producers, and to make farmers markets accessible to residents of all income levels, thereby increasing their capacity to serve as inclusive community spaces. So it's, it's a, a program where people can come and get certain foods from certain vendors, and like I said, the vendors would have to agree to participate in the program, and then because this is a contract, I'm just giving the surface here, because it would have to be signed by the directors of the program who are representing the farmer's market program, and then the town of Chestertown, and I assume Sabine's going to do all the tracking, because there are 28 different categories here for, and this is data, this is for data collection, as with any, basically grant money, I don't know whether you call it grant or not, it's kind of subsidized food money, so I'm going to give that back to Bill, and if you want any more information about that...
We, we've got to authorize the mayor to sign this document for the town.
Do you, do you want Sabine to explain it in detail?
No, I, I trust her on this. I think just, to be safe, just please authorize the mayor to sign this if he's the one that has to sign it for the town.
And I don't know whether, she's been away, so I don't know whether, and we don't have a full complement of vendors at the market right now, but we have some more coming back, and...
So if, if it is in fact the mayor, I think if we could have a motion that, that we agree to this memorandum of understanding?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that, what's the mayor sign?
That the council authorized the mayor to sign for this.
Okay, that the council authorized the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding between the Maryland Farmers Market Association and Chestertown Farmers Market.
All right. Second thing?
All is in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? All right, so unanimously agree to allow me to sign the MOU.
And then she'll submit it.
I'll get Sabine to make sure that it's you that they want.
Okay.
Pretty sure, what she said before she left her hall.
Okay, she, she's supposed to be back today. Okay, my last item is I have written a letter to the Chestertown mayor and council, Chestertown town manager at 118 North Cross Street, Chestertown, Maryland, and dated it today, March 18th, 2019. I was notified by Bill Ingersoll, town manager, on Thursday, March 14th, that my son has applied for the position of marina manager at the Chestertown Marina. At the time of that conversation, I verbally recused myself from the application, interview, and hiring process of all applicants for the position of marina manager with the town of Chestertown due to a conflict of interest. I have contacted and received a response regarding the content of this notice from the Ethics Commission for the town of Chestertown. Please accept this written statement that I am recusing myself from the application, interview, and hiring process of all applicants for the position of marina manager with the town of Chestertown due to a conflict of interest. I am requesting from the town of Chestertown to be excluded from all verbal, written, and electronic communications regarding the application, interview, and hiring process for the position of marina manager. Only in the case that my son withdraws his application for employment as the marina manager would I request to join the interview and hiring process. Signed, Linda Kuiper, Chestertown Town Council, Ward 2.
Got it.
Amen.
Very good. Well done. Okay, anything else, Linda?
That's it.
All right.
Very good.
Councilman Foster?
Yes.
Ward 1.
I really want to second Marty's comments, both on Chris Reno's presentation to the breakfast group, it really was. I attend most of those meetings, and I've never seen so many people there, and most of them will pay more weight and pay attention.
Lot of coffee.
Also with regard to the, the hospital meeting, room upstairs was almost filled. This is, is so critical, as we all know. I can't go on Tuesday, I can go on Wednesday. I know a number of people from Heron Point are going to be going, this is, I'm speaking there tomorrow, and I know that'll be the most important issue on their minds. I'm going to be borrowing some of Chris's slides to show them, but what they're really going to ask questions about are the hospital and what they're going to do about it. I also went today to the meeting in Greensboro on the opportunity zones. I don't claim any expertise on this, and I think it's important opportunity. Maybe I know enough to be able to ask some better questions than otherwise would have, but it was a good presentation and well attended by, particularly by people from Chestertown. Every county has, has one or more of these zones, and I'm pleased that we're, we're in the game, and we'll see what we can do with that. Other local news, the Osprey are back, and they'll nest on our backyard, this is the eighth year they've been there, right on time. We look forward to having them.
All righty. There were no requests from the, from the public to be on the agenda this evening. Are there any questions or comments from the massive audience tonight? Yes, sir.
Will you stand here or come up?
You can come up, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. I'll be very quick. So I wanted to just, first off, I wanted to congratulate the mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Serena won the Washington College President's Leadership Award for service in the community, and we take that seriously, and we're delighted to give it to you, I'm very proud of you, sir.
Appreciate it.
So, you know, I wanted to, I came here after a meeting today, I wanted to thank Chief Baker. On April the 13th, we're having an unusual day on campus. We expect 3,000 to 4,000 people coming to Washington College. We have admitted Students Day, the War on the Shore, the doubleheader, and five alumni games. The key issue for us is we couldn't possibly deal with parking without Chief Baker's assistance, and I just wanted to mention to you and, and to Chief how much we appreciate everything he's doing. And then the final thing, I just would let you know, is as you were informed at the last meeting, we have six properties that are for sale. I, I can't divulge exactly, but I want you to know that we've entered into agreements of sale on three of them.
Wow.
We should be announcing those sometime in the next two or three weeks, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Langrath. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience this evening? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to be adjourned.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We unanimously adjourned. 43 minutes.
Yes, I'm feeling it.